Legions.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, our city clerk, can you hear us okay?
I can.
All right, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
Present.
John Glondo.
Here.
Sarah Lackey.
Here.
Stephen Harper.
Present.
Beth Williams.
Here.
And Ken Ratliff.
Here.
Hey, who does president and account for? So next, we have the approval of the meeting agenda.
I've moved that we approve the meeting agenda as presented. I guess, do we need to add the executive session onto the agenda, the second one?
Oh, I, well, I don't think we have to, but we will do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll announce that.
Okay. And I motion to sit.
Second.
Move to second to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. So we are at this point under announcements, appointments, awards, and recognitions. We're gonna go through a process of selecting a new council person. The way we usually do that is we have the applicant to come up. We have them in order here. Tell us who you are and tell us a little bit about yourself and the council may have, you know, some questions. And then we'll go through all four applicants. And then what the question was before, we, the council will get up and go for an executive session about this issue in the other room. Come back and we'll discuss who I want to vote for.
As a, as a point of order, I might recommend, you know, we just review them per date received.
Date received. I don't know which we have in the sending order.
Yeah, we have that.
Are they in the two?
Yeah.
So is that, and is that, is that the order that's on the agenda?
That's yours on the agenda, as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. So first, we'll hear from David Calo, how do you say? Calo Leo, okay, lay.
Let me take the first.
All right.
I did Cleo for three and a half years. Been on the volunteer fire department for two and a half years. I was told by Ed Mills that you, hey, there's an opening. We knew, we knew that you wanted to get involved, so I already am filled it out. Trying to get involved just because I love my community. Came, came here from the west side, very crowded down there, was down there about eighteen, twenty years. And, you know, got a little bit crowded, decided that the commute was worth it. That's what I've been doing for about three and a half years.
So, twenty eighteen was when you moved in? Where'd you live before here?
Kansas.
And is there anyone in the city government who's related to you?
Yeah.
Other than fire departments or any other community activities you're involved in?
Association for the fire department.
Compass group, that's not the encompass business in town.
No, compass group, huge and long, right? I work on the Microsoft campus.
Oh.
Just as a capping. So just a bed for Microsoft.
What things you have the accomplishment council, what priorities would you have?
Looking out for the community. That's, that's it.
Okay, are there any issues which you'd be interested in?
No, it's like whatever issues I hear, I'll be fair about it. I don't come here with an agenda. Just come here to help the community, that's it.
We had any previous board experience on any other committees or boards or any?
I have not.
All right. Well, there, there was a pretty tough drilling, yeah, I know.
Tough, okay. Oh, and do you own any real property within the city limits?
Yes, Thursday.
Okay. Great sense.
All right.
You guys get in the game, you have the house.
So you're paying to see water.
Yes, I am.
Every month.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Stephen Malick.
Hello, I'm Stephen Malick, most of you guys already know me, so thank you. Been living in town for about eight years. I filled out the positions since I lost Mr. Glondo. So I already wanted to be a part of this and as I, so I can see how I can help the city as we move forward. I have two businesses in town, or one in Rosan, one here, Basecamp Books and Bites, Basecamp Outfitters. I was in the building commission for almost a full year before I had to step down. And looking to help out here, ask about some of the issues that are important. City infrastructure was one of those. And then housing, worker housing, low income housing for our employees, frontline employees that work in this town. The only other weird thing that I have, sadly, I was hoping to move it, but I wasn't able to. If I do get appointed, I do have to leave probably once in a blue moon. I play hockey on the west side and so my games are, tonight's games at nine forty, so I'd actually have to leave at eight. Doesn't happen all the time, but every once in a while it will come up. That's the only concept that I have, because my games are always on Mondays and they're either at nine twenty or ten fifteen.
Wow.
So. Yeah, but gotta stay in shape somehow.
I've never even put skates on.
I haven't, was it pretty?
So Stephen, eight, eight years, twenty fourteen or twenty thirteen, something like that?
Yes.
And where were you before here?
I lived basically just outside of Glacier National Park, a town of Essex, Montana, population twenty-three. So I finally decided to move to a big city.
Oh, wow, okay, cool.
I didn't have to drive an hour and a half to the grocery store.
And you're closer to hockey teams around here?
Yes.
And is there anyone in city government that's?
No.
Okay. Seen your businesses and I, I think that's great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, mom's the words.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stephen. Next, we'll hear from Elizabeth.
Do I start or do you prompt me?
What's that?
Do you want me to start talking or do you prompt me?
No, you can go ahead and go for it.
I'm Elizabeth Kurtz, I go by Liz, and I live at one twelve West Second Street here in Cleo. I walked. Um, I moved here in twenty thirteen from Spokane where I was retired from Washington State University, College of Mercy. That was my last university job and I'd worked for State of Washington Higher Education for forty years. So I come with a lot of the experience that goes along with being in that environment for four decades. And you can ask me a specific question if you want, I wouldn't even know where to begin telling you. If you've been to college, you probably know. But out of that experience, I dealt with medical professionals, I contracted them, lots and lots and lots of students, entry level and graduate students. Committees and commissions, of course, staff were always involved in. And I, when I grew up in Cheney, and Cheney was a really, really small town. I'm thinking that the population of Cheney when I was growing up was very close to what the population of Cleo is now. And the reason I bring that up is because I understand the culture of a small community like this. It's, it's difficult when you come from a bigger surrounding and to understand that we kind of have our own little isms. We're very close knit and make sure and know everybody so that we can help them. And it, it's just a real tight and unique way to live. I was married to a police officer for twenty-nine years in Cheney. And I gained a lot of experience in community service while I was married to him and raised two sons. I worked with high-risk youth offenders. I assisted with adolescents and the elderly. I took in elderly people until they had an opportunity to get their situation resolved. I also took care of children who, in that moment when law enforcement was responding to a domestic call of some kind, and there was a child involved, and they had to take the child out of the home. Not always someplace to go when you live in Cheney, so they would come to my house. And I was vetted to be able to take these children and hold them and keep them safe until such time as children and adult services came to get them. So I come with a lot of experience, not in city government, but prior to coming to Cleo in twenty thirteen. I found myself comparing Cleo to Cheney and how the, there's councils work and what y'all do. And it's very similar, unique to small, small communities. And over the years, I was reading the paper or I talked to somebody and hear what's going on in the city. And when this last election came up, I decided that I was going to prepare myself to be on the ballot for this position. So I spent the last year attending, with very few exceptions, every single city council meeting, either in person or as. Um, and I have attended the budget, the budget meetings and I have made myself smart on the policies and procedures handbook. And I do a lot of reading on the MRSC, which is the, I never remember what that means, but I know it's the.
Minnesota Research.
Thank you. And so I'm really very interested and I'm aware of a plethora of projects going on right now. And I, I have some good ideas and I have experience in my age to be able to bring my life experiences, my skill sets to this position. So, have any questions?
Do you see any potential conflict of interests, being the fact that you're married to another kinds of person?
None of it, not at all. In fact, we signed a sworn affidavit in our application process that we will remain objective and not have any personal agenda in this position, so that will have nothing to do with it. And you got my signature on it, so. What other things in the community have you been doing? I did elder care through LTC, I got my CNA. When my mother-in-law came to live with us, she was, she had had two strokes and so she wasn't able to walk, so she was in wheelchair. So our house was fixed up to accommodate that with rails and big doorways and stuff. Took care of her for thirteen months until she passed away. Then we had office committee and health. And so I did a lot of that and I had a lot of clients in Rosman and Cleo. And I did meals on wheels, I took food to many of these people. And that's where I learned that some of them needed infant care, so I chatted with their families. They hired me to take care of their people. And because I was certified and contracted with ALTC and Ellen's, I was able to substantize my income doing that. I tried to get around, I'd worked in restaurants, because that was an old skill in that high school days. It wasn't this century. So, um.
There's a few of us in that situation.
Yeah, I know. I'm not saying numbers, that's all right. But I've experienced a lot and I have a lot to offer. And I want to have a voice and some input in some of these very important projects that the city is working on right now. Yeah, I want, I want, I want to be here too.
What issues are important to you?
It's always gonna be the top three, infrastructure and budgets and employment. I mean, I was looking up on interviewing city council applicants to fill a base. And so I watched the city of Seattle when they did one of theirs. And that was one of the questions and those top three were always the ones. So that's kind of rote and mundane. And while those are important, I'm particularly concerned about the effect of the City Heights project and the forty-nine, forty-seven degrees north projects. Those are huge and there's so much important dialogue and conversation and it's just, it seems to me overwhelming. And I'm sure it is to all of you as well, but to me, those are the two, the top two. Outside of everything else that's seen. The decisions that are made are going to impact everybody for a very long time. It's important to do our homework and read and study up and talk to people and understand both sides of what's going on. So we can make our citizens happy.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Now I can see if I get this right, but is that Sieve? But I, Sieve, but Sieve is the right way, they handsome, right?
Yes.
Yes, Norwegian, yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for having me here. I've spent almost two decades in federal service with immigration. Prior to moving to Cleo a few years ago, I worked in our Yakima field office. And so I lived in Yakima Tri-Cities area. I grew up in Port Angeles, Washington, which is, I guess technically on the west side, but it's a little further west. And so the reason why I guess I want to get involved is prior to COVID, I've been pretty active with like Washington State Bar sort of outreach with helping individuals on family law issues or things that don't conflict with my federal service. But also I think that I've spent almost twenty years adjudicating cases and thinking about the law, reading the law, analyzing things and making decisions just based on sort of what the facts are before me. So I thought this would be a good fit in that way. Plus, I chose Cleo as our home, as soon as I could work from home, we're here. So I may represent that new incoming folks and trying to maybe strike that balance between growth and encouraging business and folks to come, but keeping the beauty of Cleo and maintaining that. Thank you.
So, Sieve.
Yes.
Loving it.
Oh, thank you, people think it's an acronym. I'm like, oops. Yes, yeah.
And before that, where you grew up, in Port Angeles and it was Yakima Tri-Cities?
Yeah, yeah, I've spent some time across the world because of my job, I'm really fortunate, but yeah, Washington is my.
Love that, National Geographic. Sure.
Name some of the places you've been in the world.
Which one, do you mean the custom show, because that's not us. Opening suitcases, that's not, yeah, no, I kind of wish I could have done that. But I do the green cards and naturalization, adoptions, foreign adoptions, and also I did refugee processing. So we have a lot of details.
Like yours back when listening.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot more opportunities too, so sometimes we get to detail different parts. Yeah.
Is there anyone in Cleo city government related to you?
Uh, just my husband, he's not related, but nobody in the city government, no.
Okay.
What issues you passionate about?
These are great candidates and candidates.
I think the other candidate said it very well, I think there's a lot of issues for such a small city. There's just a lot of really interesting issues and there's a lot of interest in Cleo. It's just from a business perspective and just living. So I think the issues that are important to me is just, again, representing people and having that voice here. So there's one on the agenda, the water, the infrastructure, the pipes, you know, things like that, that if we're gonna grow, then you know, we're also gonna have to think of all the other things of administering just the city, right? The, the business, sometimes immigration, you always hear it in the news, but in my business, it's like the actual rules and regulation writing is the most important impactful, long-term, so I think that sometimes gets lost.
You do budgeting type work and you know?
I had some, when I was, I was our field office director in Yakima, which is a fairly small office, but it still has about four hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment and twenty federal officers and some contractors. So I have some, but I also had a lot of help, so I'm not gonna say, hey, you know, it's quite easy. But that's some experience to budget.
And regulations, you've written regulations.
I have, yeah, I've tried to, so federal service, you try, right? Sometimes people don't always agree with it, but yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, so we'll retire to the other portion of the city and.
I shouldn't, we need to say what we're going for.
For how long? Five, ten, fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes with a lot of discussion.
Twenty, twenty? Okay, so that means.
There's four, six.
At a quarter to.
Quarter to.
Hey, we're back in session. And I will, I will say that as a council, these kinds of decisions are some of the hardest ones that we have to make. Because we care about all the people that opened it up in the council.
I'd like to make a motion. Real quick, before we proceed, can we just text Beth?
Oh, yeah.
Are you here?
So I'm still seeing that she's, she texted Zoom and says, I'll be gone for a bit, so Beth, are you there? Can you hear me?
Let's give her a chance. Oh. Maybe Rob. Call her, try calling her, find out she's available or not. Yeah, my phone's in there. Mr. Mayor, we're waiting, I will say there's some outstanding candidates here.
Okay, I did talk, I did talk with her, but she's still busy at, I'm assuming, a work thing.
Okay, we'll proceed.
We don't wanna, do we want to wait for her, do we want to put some, the vote and move on until she's available or do we want to? So I would move, I would move that we proceed with the proceedings and excuse her from the balance of the meeting unless she introduces herself. And take a second.
Second time. Move to second is to, let's move Beth from the meeting at this time, is that correct? Just. Questions on the motion? Not all in favor with aye?
Aye.
So the floor is the councils.
Right. Yeah, but I would echo Councilor Ratliff's comments, having an excellent state of candidates. And I would, I would move that we appoint Sieve Baygins. It's a, point of order we typically will nominate, and then if nomination ceases, then we, and we don't have more than one candidate. I, no, I'm not, that's, that was the effect of what I was, what I was saying, so yes. I moved to nominate Sieve Baygins. Second denomination. And I would, I guess we don't vote on nomination, and then I would also nominate David. Could you remind us of your last name? Calo.
Any other nominations?
There are none, then I would move that the nomination ceases.
Okay, second.
Second.
So we have a nomination for two, so what we've done in the past is Kathy does a poll vote and.
Can we speak to motions first?
What's that?
Are we gonna do it to the motions?
Oh, I don't know, that'd be good, I guess.
Yeah, I, I would just say on both of them, I think they're both qualified, they're both new, which I think is good. I think having new people to the community is a good thing, because that's, we have a lot of new people. And so having that perspective is good. You know, I would just say between the two, I think that Sieve being an attorney and having experience writing regulations and understanding of government and all the things that we deal with, I think that's a unique perspective, but we don't have currently on this council, because a lot of, a lot of council. a lot of, a lot of councils have an attorney, uh, on, on, on their, and I think that's a, that's a good perspective to have, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was on the, on my nominee, um, the, one of the major, major factors, uh, was volunteer service. We are, his, our city is a history of many people who have volunteered within the fire department, moving on and, uh, being great public servants in the, in the seat of our mayor and the seat of city council, and, uh, that tradition aside, um, I see buy-in and a good heart and man, and I stand in support of his nomination.
Okay, so usually what we do is, uh, we'll have Kathy do a poll vote, reach council person to say the name of the person that they, uh, choose to vote for, and so Kathy, are, are you with us?
I am here.
Okay, Kathy, by the way, everyone is our city clerk. I really just, uh,
She's a color good.
All right, Kathy, go ahead with the poll vote.
Matthew Lund.
Are we voting with a name? Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Oh, uh, Bay Hanson.
John Guando.
Bay Hanson.
Sarah Lackey.
David Pecalino.
Stephen Harper.
David Paco Leo.
And Beth Williams is not back, uh, Ken Ratliff.
You have to abstain before.
I want you all to stay active in city government. I'm gonna vote for Steve Behanson.
Kathy?
Okay, so we have, uh, one, two, three votes.
That's it, that is the, the, the president. Yes, okay.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Bay Hanson, we have three votes. David Paco Leo, we have two.
Hey, um, Kathy, do you want to, uh, come forward and, uh, and have this person take oath of office, or?
I would love to. I'll be right in.
Come on, Dave, come on up.
I see Bay Hanson. I do, I see Behanson. And the state of Washington and the state of Washington, but I will support the constitution. Constitution of Washington and the constitution. And will teach the best in my judgment skill, the truly faithful, diligently, and harshly. Perform the duties of the office of city council. The office of city council.
Yeah.
Need a packet, you need a packet.
Does he have a packet? We have to get you a packet.
Oh, is there one over here?
We're getting two now.
You're ready to go. Okay, so next, uh, on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent as presented.
Second. Move to second it to accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor with I?
Aye.
Pose. Now we're down to officer and mission reports. So first we'll hear from, uh, our city administrator, Rob.
Yeah, hi, uh, and, and welcome to the new coun- council person. Sounds like, uh, you'll, uh, you'll do real good. Thanks. Anyways, I don't have a whole lot to, uh, report tonight, but, um, so last week I did have an opportunity to, uh, attend some training. This was, uh, in-person training for the first time in a couple of years, so, uh, there's several certifications that I have that I need to keep up with my, uh, education, so, uh, I, I attended that last week and that was, uh, it was a good time, good, good conference. Uh, just a little update on the planner position, uh, so far, um, well, we don't really have an application yet. Uh, we do have somebody that is interested, would like to, uh, he's, I, I guess from out of state. Uh, he's having a hard time actually finding a place to live, so he's a little apprehensive to move somewhere that where he may not be able to live. So we're, we're still, we're still out there on, on the websites. Uh, there's three websites that we've got, so we're, we're still hoping that we get more applicants. And then right before this meeting, we had a, uh, IT committee meeting, and I believe, uh, council member, uh, Lund will give us, uh, what, what was taking place there, but other than that, uh, if you have any questions, that's all for my report.
I will add to his report. He wasn't just taking continuing education. Uh, Rob is our, our, this, our building official, and to maintain that certification, there's, uh, educational requirements. So and what he was saying was that up to in the last couple of years, it's all been virtual, but now it's gone, it was the last week. Okay, next we'll hear from, uh, Mike Inheart, our public works director.
Our mayor, council, thank you. Uh, the guys are continuing to do spring cleanup type stuff. We have had a couple of mechanical breakdowns with the back truck. Um, it's back up and running.
I guess they brought her on the city council right then there.
Indeed.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
Did anybody even understand what that said?
I heard city council.
No, it was not.
Wasn't scared of maybe another.
All right, well, the crew's gonna start grading alleys starting soon. We gave a couple of trials out there, and because winter is still in effect, believe it or not, we're still not even into April, so we're still technically into winter month, so people just need to be patient, just because the sun's shining doesn't mean everything's ready to go. We've graded a couple of the alleys and they just turned to pure mud, so we still need to let it dry out a little bit. We know there's some potholes out there, but unfortunately, we kinda have to wait till things dry out. Um, this is Matt's last week. Again, I mentioned that he did promote and is moving to the town of South Claymore, so again, I wanna say thanks to him for all of his hard work and five years of dedication to the city. Um, we do have interviews tomorrow to fill his spot as well as, uh, our other spot that became vacant. Um, we're gonna work in the next coming weeks, getting all the bathrooms open back up and all the city parks. Um, getting the parks cleaned up and back into service for the springtime, but again, we're still in winter, so we're taking steps, but still need to be careful. We can't get a lot of equipment out in the grassy areas yet, because we don't wanna create a bigger mess than what we've already got, so, uh, any questions?
Thank you, Mike. Next, uh, we'll hear from, uh, Kirk. Are you there?
I am. Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, just to give you an update, Officer Matt Anderson is still at the equivalency academy. He's got one week down, one week more to go. Uh, we'll be excited to get him back and back on the FTO program when he returns. Uh, in addition to training, Sergeant Albo and I are signed up for a class, uh, towards the end of April. Continuing education there as well. Uh, the crews reported a pretty busy weekend. Uh, they stated that the town was full, and it looked like, uh, a bunch of summer visitors were here already, uh, is how they described it. And the one case of interest I wanted to bring up is, and it may have already heard, but there was an attempted burglary at, uh, the Cashmere Valley Bank Drive-Thru. Uh, we had three male suspects trying to break into the ATM machine, um, after stealing a car or a pickup here in town. Um, they weren't successful. They did not get the machine. They destroyed it, but they didn't get it, and they left the stolen vehicle at the scene. We don't have any ID on the suspects. Um, this happened early Sunday morning, about one thirty in the morning, so we're hoping if anybody saw anything suspicious up there to come forth and hopefully give us enough clues to try and develop suspects on that case. And, uh, finally, our HVAC system is still, uh, running on emergency mode from the winter. This, this is the same unit that we have problems with every year. Uh, so I have two different HVAC companies. Going to give us some estimates and, and their opinion on what to do to make it better. When I get those, I'll, uh, present everything to council, so we can make a decision on which way you guys wanna go with our HVAC system at the police department. Other than that, that's, that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Steven has a question, Kirk.
Go ahead, Steven.
Yeah, is this report, uh, the date's given, it's, is it just the report of the month of January?
No, the, the, the report that Cheryl sent?
The, yeah, cuz it was saying all dates between, uh, the first of January and the first of February.
Okay.
I was just wondering, cuz it just seemed like an inordinate amount of parking issues, and I was wondering if we, uh, if we, um, if we issue citations with those, or if those are just like warning people that are parked on the side of the road, or how's that?
Um, a lot of those were winter parking issues that were able to be resolved, um, with, without towing or citing. Um, we actually did fairly well this year with complaints, um, when people were contacted. Um, Mike and his crew were real good about letting us know what vehicles needed to be moved ahead of time, give us, given us a little bit of a heads up, so we could get stuff moved, so I'm sure that's what you're seeing mostly.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just for an update, um, calls as of today, total calls, uh, that we have responded to thus far, the, for the entire year is a thousand and thirty-two total.
Thank you.
Chief, um, the cars are great, by the way, the new cars look really good. Um, did we ever get, I don't think I ever saw it, did we ever get the, at least the image of the new patch?
No, did you see the patch in the paper? That Jim posted?
Get in the paper.
Okay, so I checked on the patch guy today. Um, of course, they're made in China, um, and we anticipate getting a, an actual physical sample, um, to us this week. He was gonna reach out to them. I'm assuming tomorrow, just to see where we're at in that process, uh, cuz obviously we want one in hand to make sure the colors are, are what we're after before we, um, produce three hundred of these, so, um, hop- hoping to get that going this week. It's been a long process, but we had to wait for Chinese New Year, et cetera, for February, and that delayed it six weeks right there, so.
Could you email us a picture of it? I might probably already threw away the paper. Sorry, honey.
Uh, yeah, let me see. Yeah, I certainly can. I, I was gonna say, I might have one right here on my screen if, uh, did I, did I just close the Zoom meeting? Nope. Okay, hang on.
We can't see you.
You can't see me?
Yes, you, the council's locked on our screen, so.
He's up there in that little square, isn't he?
Says Tom.
You want me to add it real quick?
Adam, Adam, real quick, Adam, and I'll put it back.
Um, how on earth? Well, if there's, can I share the screen? Is that what I can do?
You gotcha. Just hold it up to your camera and show us.
Okay. I found it on the iPad, but I couldn't figure out how to share the screen, so, but oh, gosh, there's glare. You see that at all?
We can, we can see it.
Oh, there you go, that works. Oh, I like it.
Doesn't, can you see that? So.
Police at the top?
Yeah, so it's a bad.
I love that.
Okay, so if you look at that, obviously we put police on top, cuz we want it to be readily identifiable, and we put it in big letters, block letters up front. Below that, you'll see a mountain. Uh, the designer that we worked through, I said, I don't want a generic mountain, cuz a lot of police patches have the same mountain on them, just four or five basic. And, uh, I want Peel Point, yeah, exactly. I mean, that's something that Claymore and Roslyn share, and, um, so he actually came to my office, cuz you know, I've got a picture of Mount Peel right there in my office, and he traced that to make sure that we actually got Peel on here. Claymore, you see the emblems in the Roslyn, that font was chosen. Roslyn's, um, known for their, their R in their Rainier beer type font, and I, I felt that was appropriate to, to honor that with that style of writing. And also, uh, the emblem we chose is for the heritage, uh, for the cities. Claymore was obviously logging. Um, that's where you see the saw on the log, and of course, Roslyn, uh, the king of coal, so there's, there's the coal and the coal pick. And, uh, another thing we put on there is our motto, pride and community, and that's on a, on the bottom for a specific reason, because we feel that motto is the foundation of everything we do and why we do it, and that is a trait that both Roslyn and Claymore share. And we felt that things, that's the foundation of what we stand for and what we do. We put that as the foundation of our patch, so, um, that was the, the train of thought into the design of the patch.
Very well thought out. It looks great. I really like it a lot.
Thank you. And hopefully we'll get them soon, so, uh, that, there's a gal that we, we use out of Ellensburg for sewing patches, et cetera, on the shirts, and I reached out to her to say, hey, I've got a really big order, cuz she usually does one or two uniforms at a time, and, uh, she, of course, jumped right on that, and she said, I'll even come to you guys, so, um, hopefully if we have a long weekend, she can, um, coordinate where we can get all our uniforms switched out, new patches put on, and, um, be uniformed.
Kirk, this, this can.
Yes.
In the, uh, under traffic infractions, month of January one in Claymore and two in Roslyn, and in February nine in Claymore, one in Roslyn, so what, what's, uh, what's happening in traffic infractions?
Well, the, but are you, are you asking why there, there wasn't a lot of them?
What were they?
Oh, what were they? I, I don't have that in front of me for specific.
Okay.
I, I don't, I'm not sure. Um, it, if it's an infraction, then it's non-criminal, so it's most, most likely speeding, or it could be an associated with an infraction with a traffic accident, so if somebody was to be found at fault for a specific accident, then, um, it would fall under that category as well, so I really, without looking at, at the case numbers, I, I won't be able to tell you, uh, what the actual charge was or why it was written.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
Okay, thank you.
So next, we're gonna have another executive session and I should, uh, I'll read this and then we'll figure out how much time we need. And this is pursuant to RCW forty-two point three point one one zero to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation, which the agency is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. So uh, there'll be no, no decisions afterwards and how much time do we need?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. Okay. So uh, do we, what time do we come back here?
Twenty-five after.
Twenty-five after?
Well, I mean, what clock?
It says seven eleven. Yeah, so seven eleven.
Let's go.
Nice to see you in person, Alex.
Eight twenty-six, eight twenty-six.
Session. Hey, we'll move on with the agenda here. Now we're at citizen comments on non-agenda items. And uh, please uh, keep your comments to five minutes. Um, our attorney has to drive back to Seattle, so we're letting her go. So come ahead, tell, tell us your name and uh, tell us your comments.
My name is Brian Brunner, live at six thirty-one, Paulus Road, which is Upper Peel Point area. I'm at the border sky. We've been over here since nineteen ninety-six, bought our first cabin, kind of like some, we like the area. And it's a by, by property, nineteen ninety-nine, mostly forest land, thirty-two, the forest land and then for residences. And my comments today, tonight rather, are about uh, forty-seven north, not the development, but company. My whole career is, is uh, pretty much fact-based, like anybody's career is fact-based. I was a A-six pilot in the Navy at Old Carver for twenty-two years. And it was a seven forty-seven, seven thirty-seven, instructor pilot, calling for ten years. And I left there because I didn't like their their uh, money. It's their business. It's not like the Navy, which is safe. And I had an excavating company for seventeen years, partially over here on the west side. And we moved over here full-time in twenty-eleven.
No, it's not you, right?
Oh, okay.
Somebody's.
Anyway, we moved over here full-time, twenty-eleven, when I last sang red with some college. And I guess my fact-based training is basically looking at the way airplanes are flying, when you read your manual, there's no caution or warnings. Helps a little things to explain things, how this works, how that works, caution dark. If you didn't listen to this one, then this is going to cause this to happen, you know, to supply you what, and warnings are like. You didn't do all the rest of the things they told you to do, so your plane may not fly, your parachute may not work if you're. Well, that's the way I look at it. But some communities, uh, machine their jobs, develop properties and make money for their stakeholders, their shareholders. Gary Schiffman, who was a chairman CEO, that made a statement to an analyst. Do it scary. There certainly is, it's certainly the west coast, certainly right up to the northwest is an area of concentration where we feel we can actually develop communities to better return for our shareholders. That's for them to make the money and stuffs. You look at uh, some of the reviews, some community reviews and complaints, hundred thirty-eight complaints, zero resolve. Hundred thirty-eight unsolved. Another one from Michigan, I believe it is. That community took some Muskegon, Michigan, faced with a lawsuit, paying the company, took a former driver's say man, mobile home, self-awareness. Another one is a trust pilot, which is a rating uh, thing, and you look at that. Three percent are excellent, ninety-seven percent are poor, and I know ninety-one percent, six percent are poor, I'm sorry, and ninety-one percent are bad. Well, this, this is how this machine operates. Um, business of fake and empty promises. Uh, be, business fear in your company and corporation listed as a big fat D, do not do to some communities. Stay away from these people. I lived here three months and they charged me one thousand gallons of water a day for three straight days of a single person living by myself. Company was the most morally bankrupt company I have encountered. The, it just, it just goes on and on and on. Let's get there, some management is zero. Horrible place, do not lease a purchase, pushing seniors out of their homes. Like, if I could give it a zero, I would. Horrible selling experience. I would give it zero stars. Worry. It just, it just goes on and on, pages and pages. Stop Bear Lake Resort in Utah. I know there was a letter put in by the, to the county commissioners, and I'm not really going to address that. Everybody knows because their whole plan that made you want to take the plan off the table. And the same thing with the mayor of Ross. Clay Meyer is a sheriff. Put in a letter and I have some personal experience with that. I'm actually moved over here in two thousand and eleven. I guess my wife wanted some space without me in it, because I was fully retired. So I volunteered for the citizen control at the sheriff's office, because I remember the citizen control for six years. And after three years, I started planning, Tony said, well, wouldn't you like to do something a little more exciting? But he talked in applying for the reserve deputy program. So I got through there at sixty-six and exciting was getting tasered in pepper spray. So I didn't, I didn't think he mentioned it. But anyway, as three as a reserve deputy. And the way Sheriff Myers puts it, so the same way Sheriff Dana, is these kind of communities are not full-time. Higher rates of nuisance conflicts and crime. And I personally respond with some other deputies to the nation trailer park or a situation up there. Um, South Sun Canyon Road, Big Trail Park, South Sun Canyon Road, we all were sponsored on their points. And Elk Metal, Elk Metals isn't quite like that, although there are a lot of individual owners on their lots, police and red trailer. Anyway, my personal experience was looking at all this and putting in a fact-based thing. Flying airplane and I had a ticket on some community's airplane, I go to the bus station and a crane station.
Thank you.
And the others, I wish to address the council.
I'm Paul Gretzner. I'm a homeowner here in the Allen. First of all, my mom was the first female elected to my hometown city council in Lake Wisconsin in nineteen seventy. I have a huge mass respect for females in leadership roles, so thank you, gentlemen as well. Happen to know some of you individually, you might have bumped into me in town. My challenge is, I don't even know if you know my business, I don't know if it matters. I manage twelve billion dollars for a living for organizations. All due respect and deference to the gentleman in the room. You are dealing with one of the most nefarious reeks in the history of America. Undoubtedly, unequivocally, exactly what the gentleman just said. I implore you to make a decision for the future of what you want this community to look like, feel like, and be like. I hope y'all can sleep at night when we vote on this thing. I have put in multiple requests to a number of you. No response, no response to my emails. Understood that I'm getting emotional because I don't get it. I live in a world of transparency. Believe it or not, on Monday you had an arbitration hearing as it pertains to the city heights development. Any word on the outcome from that arbitration hearing?
It's still in court.
Okay. That's all I had for today. I appreciate the time and your efforts. I hope things work out for the community.
Thanks.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Larry Stopper. Good evening, you guys. Congratulations to the new uh, city council member. Uh, I just have an interest in knowing if anything's moving forward as it relates to the hearing exam or um, the job description and, or the um, the action that I requested, which would be holding off any class four type applications until such time the hearing examiner is in play. I know that finding a uh, city planner has proven to be very difficult. I've looked into this a little bit myself and it's, it's tough out there trying to find that person, but there are hearing examiners out there. There's a lot of hearing examiners out there and it's really important to find the right one. And I'm, I would just like to know if you guys have made any consideration to uh, to moving on any of my suggestions from last, or two weeks ago.
Well, we're working on the hearing examiner. You'll hear results from that. It has the uh, the RFP is, hasn't been finalized yet, but when it does, then we'll be one advertising for it and we'll share.
Thank you.
And the other, Mr. Justice Counsel.
I'll, I'll make a sidebar comment. I have thirty-eight chartered financial analysts that work for my organization. If anyone on the council is interested, we are an independent organization. We have no proprietary product whatsoever. I'd be happy to have them come to the meeting and discuss the financial wherewithal, the backgrounds and dealings of the organization we're discussing at court seven. Now volunteer my time, my travel expense, you know.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I think we may have some um, some on the Zoom land here.
Thank you for that.
Anybody in Zoom? Is that you, Phil?
Mr. Hess.
Oh, thank you. My name is Phil Hess. I live at forty-six fifty Airport Road. And I'm serving on the uh, City of Clealum Fire Advisory Committee. And since Ed, uh, Chief Mills isn't here tonight, uh, he's given me the uh, green light to give you an update on uh, committee progress. We're in the uh, works of uh, possibly obtaining some financial assistance from the DNR to treat some of the city-owned property within the city that needs uh, treatment. When I refer to treatment, I'm talking about uh, vegetation management for fire resili- fire resiliency. And generally that means thinning and uh, either mastication or chipping. So we've identified, Ed and I have, but uh, Chief Mills and I have identified four areas for um, priority. Number one is the four point three nine acres at the uh, water tank. And these, these are all adjacent to residential neighborhoods. That's why, one of the reasons we uh, ranked them as high priority. So number one is the four acres where the city water tanks are. Uh, number two is uh, the airport road north of the runway. That's about thirty acres. And that adjoins uh, Lanigan Springs Development. Uh, third is the airport property east of the road. And number four is airport uh, property west of the road. This, I'm talking about the access road that goes up to the runway. So we have uh, in the process of scheduling a meeting with uh, DNR Rachel Mickey to shore these uh, uh, projects and uh, hopefully uh, we'll get the, the ball rolling on that uh, prior to fire season. The ball rolling, I mean, uh, treatment. In addition, uh, Ed and I and the other members of the Fire Advisory Committee have all agreed that the I-ninety right away from the uh, Clealum on, on ramp westbound to uh, to the Wood Duck Fire Area is a high priority. So uh, we have contacted the DOT to ask the question, how do we go about getting that uh, right away cleaned up? What we're talking about there is uh, fuels, uh, mitigation that are high risk for fire. And if fire starts on the I-ninety, you know where it goes. It goes into uh, both fog flats and the, the horse park and both fog flats. With regard to the horse park, uh, as you may or may not know, we treated the high priority areas in uh, two thousand and nineteen. And uh, we still have some, this is city property leased to the horse park. There's still some areas to treat, but we need the property lines identified before we know where we're at out there. So anyway, that's another area we are going to show uh, DNR Rachel Mickey uh, this coming week. So there you have it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Phil. And that, he's setting up the fireworks committee. Okay, is there any other assistant comments? Anybody in the chat room? Rob?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking. I, I don't see anybody. It looks like Beth did return, but um, uh, there's nobody in the chat. Nobody raising their hand.
Okay, we'll move on. So there's no public occurrences. Uh, there's no business requiring public hearings. So under unfinished business, I want to report that we talked with the treasurer, with Robin, and she was comfortable with the uh, with fifteen thousand dollars more on the uh, um, that's the, uh, the VNO tax pledge to the downtown association.
Why, why more? To be clear, you mean fifteen thousand dollars this year? Uh, not in addition to what we've discussed.
This is, this is fifteen thousand more than the thirty we've already.
Total of forty-five.
Forty-five.
That's it.
Wow, um, that's credit. That's credit.
It's credit.
Last year. Um, okay, so I just was reporting that and we're.
Because the motion, uh, motion, I believe, was up.
Yes, right. Fifteen was what, we did thirty. You've got a motion for thirty. And then we were discussing that we would check with the treasurer to see what she was comfortable with for additional.
So is another motion over at this point?
I, I don't think so.
I believe, let me go back to the minutes, but I believe the effect of the previous motion was enough.
Well, we authorized in the thirty last time. We authorized a thirty and we, well, see what the minutes say. To check with the treasurer, see what additional amount she was willing or felt comfortable with. Pledge it. And that's what we came up with.
The last page?
Yep, mainstream credit.
Okay, so to increase that for the treasurer recommendation.
Yeah, okay, great. All right. So we followed through.
Great, thank you.
And uh, and it's a big help. I think that the downtown association now is trying to raise uh, thirty-three something thousand more dollars to reach the goal of a hundred and eighty-five. So we're getting really close. We got a couple more days.
Excellent.
Yes. Okay, now down to new business, what we've all waiting for. That Ben's gonna, Ben is gonna read that book. Okay, we're gonna have an update on the uh, twenty twenty water system plan. So I've been in and, been in and as our city engineer.
All right, well, good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. Appreciate the opportunity to present the twenty twenty-two water system plan tonight. And congrats this eve on uh, being a council member, the city's lucky to have you. Yeah. So before we get into it, I just, I wanna, I mean, it's a, it's a two-year product that's been in the making and we're at the final stages of it at this point. Uh, I do want to give kudos where they do, and that's the city staff with Rob Omen, Mike Engelhardt, Kathy Swanson, and Robin Newcomb, and then the rest of the staff too. It's just been, they've been an integral. Want to highlight that because I feel a lot of times staff just, they don't get the kudos where, where it's necessary. And so I just want to highlight that. And I'd say that if you want to sit in the mic. What I'd like to do before we get into that water system plan itself, there's an executive summary within your packets, but just talk about general trends. And I want this to be dialogue too. So if you have questions as we go through this, I want this to be open discussion. Uh, I think the number one trend that we're seeing right now, not just in Clealum, but statewide is growth. There is an Easter, Easterly movement. We're seeing that in Yakima, we're seeing it all over eastern Washington. It's not just massive developments, but it's just growth and it's, and it's coming this way. And growth is inevitable, but it's, but it's got to be responsible growth. And that's part of the, the process with this plan is being responsible, planning for that growth and. being responsible, planning for that growth and doing the right things to make sure that the city's systems are in place to support whatever growth happens. Looking at numbers, cause I'm an engineer, I love numbers. I love statistics. In four years, the city's water production grew a hundred million gallons. That is a lot of water. And that's with just minimal growth. There's been just minimal growth in the last five, six years in Claylum. There's a lot on the horizon. So we're already seeing some of the growth. And this has been unlike any other water system plan that we've done, where we're now seeing what's on the table and in terms of development agreements that have been approved, growth that is happening and what that looks like in ten years. And some of the numbers we go through this are gonna be pretty eye opening. One of the things too, that's been kind of surprising is there's been an increase in, in demands per user. And so whenever we're talking water systems, you always hear the term ERU, equivalent residential user, which is a single family home. That's the basis for all analysis, whether it's water systems or wastewater systems. It's, it's an ERU. Generally, an ERU is around two hundred gallons per day. Sometimes you get into that two hundred fifty gallons per day, but a lot of times it floats around that two hundred. And we've seen some trends the last probably two cycles of water system plans with some of the new building codes, some of the water use efficiency measures that have been put into place. We've seen a drop over time in that ERU, which makes sense. We have low flow fixtures. People are starting to use less water because rate structures are now set up to penalize those that use more water. And, and so we see this decrease, but there's actually been an increase in average day demand in Claylum in the last six years. Not drastic, but there's been an increase, two hundred and seven gallons per day up to two hundred and twenty gallons per day. So we're getting towards that, that higher end of the, the national average, we'll call it, for water consumption. On the contrary, max day demand, which we plan for in the water system plans, we want to make sure on those max days in July and August that there's sufficient water to go around, that has actually dropped, which is a little bit of a head scratcher too. Typically, we've seen in the past six years ago, it was almost six hundred gallons per day on these peak days. And in this last six-year period, it was four hundred and twenty-three gallons per day. So there's been a little bit of a drop. Kind of surprising too with some of the climate change that we're seeing where folks are irrigating more in July and August. And so generally that max day increases even more. So there's some, some things going on there that, you know, and we're seeing it not just in Claylum, but other places in Eastern Washington. So these trends aren't, aren't specific to Claylum, but they are just interesting. They make you just step back and say, something's changing here. Back to the, the single family residences, you know, with some of the increases there, there's, there's been a trend of students not leaving for college or not leaving for the workforce right away, but they're living with their parents longer. And instead of having, you know, two point one or two point two persons per house, we're starting to see that number increase a bit. And then you've got the young families where the little ones forget to turn the sink off at night. I mean, I can attest to that. I've seen my water bill go up because when you've got three and four and five-year-olds that just aren't yet responsible. And I don't know if that's part of the trend too, but it has been interesting to see some of these, these changes. Water quality, that hasn't changed. That is, we're still meeting minimum DOH standards. And, you know, again, kudos to Mike and the Public Works crews, but also to Viola Williams, done a fabulous job both on the water and wastewater sign and keeping the city's water in a, in a really good place. And then also I forgot to mention South Claylum too, you know, with the well source south of the river and what Scott and the crews are doing over there. Overall, as a region, we're doing really well and working together that way. Another trend, which is across the nation, is aging infrastructure. It was funny as we were listening to the four potential council members. I think each one of them mentioned infrastructure has been a priority. And that's important because those pipes in the ground, out of sight, out of mind, we can't have that mindset. They're aging just like everything else. And it's asbestos cement pipes. Brakes are inevitable and they're gonna continue to happen until those are addressed. One thing to note, Department of Health requires cities, every group A water system to track what's called distribution system leakage, which is DSL in the water industry. The max that cities and agencies and group A's can have is ten percent. And the city's water system is twenty-two percent. So over double of the acceptable standard is, is where the city's at currently. And that's not just a Claylum issue though.
But just a few years ago, it was thirty percent.
And that's a good point, Ken.
It was.
It has fluctuated between twenty and thirty percent. There are, there are some variations there, but bottom line, it's over ten percent.
Right.
And this is a problem across the state. It's not unique to Claylum by any means. We have aging infrastructure across the state that got to start addressing. And, and I think a theme of the discussion tonight is, is really gonna be about rates too. And I know it's the last thing that councils, any elected official wants to discuss because you're looking out to the people. And rate increases are a difficult topic. I remember presentation with Jeff Wollman seven years ago. And there was a thirty-three percent rate increase on the table and this room was standing room only. And to this day, that, that made a huge dent in, in getting some of these projects going. But we haven't done that again in a while and it's just been two and three percent every year. So that's one thing that, that we'll have many times in, in this presentation tonight to just reflect on this. We've gotta consider doing something about those rates to set up for some of these improvement projects with a lot of pipe to replace around the city. But one of the, in the lead into that too, is there's, there's grant programs across the state for transportation, for clean energy. But for enterprise funds, they're not there. They're few and far between. So water systems and sewer systems are supposed to be self-sufficient. Your rate payers are supposed to pay for those programs. You know, there are some programs like the Community Development Block Grant that the city was successful in receiving eight hundred thousand dollars earlier this year for replacing the water main on Stafford Avenue. But those are, those are few and far between and the city's right on the cusp of not even being eligible anymore for that program. So we can't rely on grants like we can on transportation and some of these other systems with water sewer. There's an issue there. And again, it comes back to rates. So those are just kind of some trends, some, some big picture things that I just wanted to throw out there to lead into the discussion. The water plan, I mean, it's, it is a BP document and fortunately it's an every ten-year document now. It used to be every six years. And the Department of Health, I believe it was five years ago, looked at all the cities across the state and some of these rural small communities. It's almost, it's, I'm not gonna call it a fixed cost, but there's an expense here that every city's going to have. And the bigger you are, it gradually becomes bigger. But it's a big expense for small cities. And to have to do this every six years, especially if you haven't seen a lot of growth in that six-year period. It, it's difficult to say, gosh, we really need to throw, you know, a hundred thousand dollars at that one. We could throw that at an improvement project. But this year, I should say the last couple of years of developing this, this is one where it makes great sense. And it is, it's good that DOH requires this because we've got a lot of growth on the horizon with two major developments currently in process. So basically going back to two thousand when Claylum combined with South Claylum, it became a regional system. Claylum for a town of, what, nine, one thousand nine hundred ninety-five people has one of the most complicated water systems for capital. It's, it's, it blows my mind when I step back sometimes and think all the different system components for a, for a town this size.
But it's also supplying water for some.
Bingo. And you've got wholesale customers and you've got a customer across the street that's really a regional partner. But because of that, you've got all these system components that other cities don't. And so it is, it's, it's an intricate document and there's a lot that goes into it. And, and when we, when we take growth into account, it is so important to get through this document. So the why, one, it's a requirement of DOH, right? We have to do it. But we've gotta go beyond that. It's to make efficient use of available resources, which in small communities are few and far between. And then third, to assure orderly growth while maintaining reliable delivery of high-quality water. So it is a ten-year approval, but there's a twenty-year projection in here. And so I wanna say the base year in this was twenty twenty-two, there's a twenty thirty-two, and then there's a twenty forty-two projection. And so that's what we look at in terms of, are there deficiencies now? Are there deficiencies in ten years? And are there deficiencies in twenty years? And how do we make sure that those deficiencies are corrected? So instead of going through all ten chapters tonight, I just wanna focus on four and we'll try to power through these relatively quickly. But I wanna make sure we do focus on some of the important details. Chapter two is the basic planning data. That, that looks at the past six years, but then it also looks at what's currently approved for development. What other potential development will be occurring? And then it projects in the next twenty years. And, you know, with that, like I said earlier, there's a base population of one thousand nine hundred ninety-five people in Claylum currently. Across the river, five hundred and thirty-five. With the developments that are already approved and the growth rates, we've got projected population example, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty-four people in twenty thirty-two. So in ten years, over five times the current population, that is a lot of growth in a ten-year period. And then in the twenty-year period, we're looking at thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven as a population and that's just for Claylum. So major growth. How do we make sure that deficiencies current and projected are met? That's, that's the point of this, this document. So I wanna go backwards and attach while we're still in the planning in chapter two. In twenty seventeen, you know, we, we look at that six-year window that was analyzed. And unfortunately, two of those years, there were big time meter failures and the consumption records were very poor. Department of Health agreed, those two years are gonna be thrown out because we don't wanna skew the numbers. So it was actually a four-year window that was analyzed. Those other two years, the data was thrown out. With that, we look at what was the highest consumption year? And that was in two thousand seventeen. There were three hundred and twenty-two million gallons consumed in twenty seventeen. That is a lot of water. Equates to an average daily consumption of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand gallons. In that year, we look at the max month. This way we can know, do we have adequate pumping capacity? Do we have filtered water capacity? Do we have reservoir storage capacity? We've gotta look at that worst-case scenario. So we always look at the max month of conception and that's July. Generally, it's either August, July, depends on, you know, when the hottest time comes and folks are irrigating, consumption goes up, kids are home, you know, from school and they're at the house versus at the school. Cause this is all again based on single families. With that, the city's current system meets storage, it meets water rights, it meets pumping capacity. But with the projected growth, that isn't the case. And that's what we'll get into in the next chapter. So chapter three, we take each of those intricate system components and we look at what is the limiting factor? Fortunately, not all areas are in a place where we say there's deficiencies that need to be corrected. And water rights is one of those, which is rare in Kedast County, the moratorium for killing wells. But the city's in a good place with water rights with what's currently in place with the Bureau contract, the other water rights. And then with what's in the water supply agreement from Cincadia, the city's in a good place for water rights. In fact, even in the twenty-year projection, there aren't any deficiencies there. Now we'll get into some of those deficiencies with the growth that's projected. So there's different system components. We'll start with supply. So think supply, there's wells and there's surface water. Surface water being the biggest one, the Yarra River intake. That wa- that raw water is pumped up to the treatment plant. The treatment plant has a number of different treatment mechanisms, the biggest one being what they call the filter trains. There's three right now in the treatment plant with one empty bay, which would be the fourth filter. And that is projected to be needed by year twenty thirty-two. And so fortunately, as part of these, you know, when we talk about responsible growth, forty-seven North originally submitted an application last year and went through this supplemental environmental impact statement. It was, it was a supplement to the original EIS that was prepared. And as part of that, you know, we, we review everything, but one of the things is water. And we've identified three different system components in that process that would need to be mitigated for. And one of them is that fourth filter train. And so when we talk about customers paying for things versus grants paying for things or even developers paying for things, this is part of that discussion. And so this is marked as, as a pro rata share where you've got a developer paying for their fair share and the city paying for, for the fair share of the growth outside of that particular development. Another part of the treatment plant, once that water's finished, it's pumped to Pressure Zone Two, Pressure Zone Three. And then from there, it's distributed to customers. And so the plant was built back in two thousand four for the build out of Claylum. And so there are empty slots within that plant for these future pumps. And so we've identified another zone three pump that essentially would be a plug and play. There's programming, there's some valving piping, some things that would need to happen with that. But the space is already at the plant. And so that's planned as, as part of the supply improvement as well. To lift that water up to Zone Three where it can then distribute to customers, not only in Zone Three, but down through pressure reducer valves into the lower pressure zones. Keep in mind, Claylum's got three pressure zones. In fact, there's Zone One and a Half that's just kind of this floating zone that water can be boosted or it can be lowered. But, but it's important to differentiate those three pressure zones because really those are standalone pressure zones within your system. And that's, that's the way that, that the document is prepared as well. Storage is another big component that's analyzed in the water plant. And within each pressure zone, again, you've gotta look at storage differently. One of the biggest needs when we look at growth projections is storage capacity. It's planning for those peak days, which are either July, August, planning for that worst-case type scenario. And beings that some of these future developments aren't in the Zone One, they're up in Zone Two and Zone Three. Zone Three reservoir is gonna be critical to the success of the city's water system. And as part of that SEIS, it was identified as well as, as one of those mitigating components. So again, there would be developer contributions, city contributions, which on that Zone Three reservoir, we'll get, we'll get into this, the future improvements later, but there were originally two reservoirs planned. Zone One and a Half is an old reservoir and it's a leaking reservoir and it's kind of a no man's land. And so it's identified as a Zone Two reservoir, but there's a separate reservoir for the higher pressure zone. And so there's two reservoirs planned. This is back in twenty twenty when this document began. Since we've had discussions internally with staff, with Viola, and we're actually talking about consolidating both of those independent reservoirs into one and having one larger Zone Three reservoir. This way you can serve all the Zone Three customers and then there's pressure reducer valves to, to lower that pressure in Zone Two. And then further you can lower it in the Zone, Zone One. So it's one less asset, you now just have a larger asset. And it accomplishes the same as having two independent reservoirs. Distribution is where we probably have the biggest challenge. And, and a lot of that is the existing distribution system. Claylum's got an old system, we're talking fifties AC water main. That's, that's what was used. And, and it lasted seventy years, but breaks are inevitable and they're becoming more and more and more frequent. Band-aids, you know, Mike screws, they can get out, they can put Band-Aids on these water mains, but you just keep chasing it, especially with AC water mains. There's a big focus on replacing AC water mains when we get back in the improvement section, but that's gonna take months. And unfortunately, with an existing system, you can't point at future developers and say, you're responsible to fix our existing system. And so that's one where there's really not much of a pro rata share. It's, it's rate payers paying to improve that system and bringing it back up to a standard where you've got another eighty years of service life. We've got two different components.
Can you assess impact fees to newcomers for buying into the system?
That's a good question, Ken. And so new pay, new customers do pay a connection fee. So they're paying a connection fee to tie into what's there. Not, not the improved ones there, but what's currently there. And so in an aging system like this, they're buying into the AC water.
Yeah, but what about the notion that the AC water mains just aren't good enough? People are adding to the ban, which will hasten them getting worn out. It seems like that.
And, and that's where having more rate payers, because you do have more customers.
Yes.
You add more to the pot essentially.
We gotta have these new.
Yes, absolutely.
But also it would be unfair, it'd be unfair to staff them, if you will, for a seventy-year-old distribution system in many cases. You can't blame them for where, where you have to put the blame. And I'll say it publicly, you have to put the blame, mayors in the sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, who didn't prepare for it. And now we're inheriting their unfortunately short-sighted decisions. And they got, they had an inexpensive quality of life during those times and now we're having to catch up.
Those were state-of-the-art pipes at the time. And that was before the class.
In the fifties? AC. Yeah, and then right at the time.
Yeah.
But they, they would know that they had a limited lifespan.
All of them.
Yeah, all of them. Right. But, but successive generations didn't, didn't say, you know what, in ten years, these pipes are gonna be all falling apart. And even, I would say even us, we are just now waking up to the fact where many of us have served. I've laid myself seven years and it's only now that we're taking meaningful action toward it. So trying to blame newcomers, as much as I'd like to, on the accelerated decay of our pipes, I don't think. Blame newcomers as much as I'd like to on the accelerated decay of our pipes, I don't think. Is a fair argument.
And and accelerated.
And with the distribution system too, I mean, part of its age, but part of it's. In old systems, a four-inch pipe was okay in the fifties and the sixties and the seventies. Well, now the Department of Health, the minimum pipe size you could put in the ground for a public water system is eight-inch diameter. And so these areas where we've got existing four-inch fire flows. And the thought forty, fifty years ago was, we'll try, but if she burns, she burns. Well, that isn't the case anymore. There's fire suppression standards. And some of these upgrades aren't just because of the age of the pipe, but increasing the pipe size from four to an eight or four to a twelve. There's one project in here on Railroad Street where there's a four-inch diameter that I believe, is it out of service on the hydrant?
So so the question is, should newcomers be paying for? What's required or for what was in?
I guess, you know, to answer that question. Uh, they are buying into a system that is currently there with water readily available. I guess location specific and that's where with the fire suppression, we've actually got a map of the entire city and where the pockets are where there are. Current issues because of the old four-inch mains, you know, there was a development in that area. If if this new development is triggering, meeting a new requirement. You could look at mitigation, you know, at that point.
That's my point.
Yeah. So there are, there, there's a number of uh, distribution mains that are are slotted for not only replacement because of the age, but also. One that's not as major as telemetry, you know, William, William, when he presented two weeks ago, he mentioned about the wastewater plant and how. I think he said at three o'clock in the morning, he got a call and he was at the wastewater treatment plant, no, he was at the water plant for the call. And then he noticed the wastewater plant screen was just black. And, yeah, and so with that, you know, he he emphasized the wastewater system in the plant. The water system, water plant isn't too far behind it. The telemetry system is about twenty years old at this point. Uh, Sam Allen Bradley Cards, he had mentioned at the wastewater plant that are. Only place you can find it is eBay unfortunately at this point.
It's Conley Engineering Center.
They they actually rebranded or renamed as Kinetics now and Pat Conley himself. Uh, but no, they they still, same group, continuity there, uh, the programmers are still there that wrote the original programs. Uh, so the the original team is still there, but the software and the hardware. Unfortunately, it's still original too. And so we need to look at.
Computer age, it just rotates.
You'll you'll never keep up with it, but there's been a lot of generations of hardware that. To only be able to find things on eBay. I know it keeps Lily up at night from Violia. Uh, so I did want to get into chapter eight, which is actually the capital improvement program. There should be a map. I think that'd be the easiest way to get through this if you go into your executive summary. Eight dash one A, it's basically a map of the the whole city limits there. And you can see there's, there's a lot of projects on here. There's thirty projects listed. And some of those are in South Playon, you know, you you've got a a big portion of those. Uh, in the the lower left there, southwest quadrant, and then south play on, but starting at the top with with Rosetti Way Connection and PRV. Um, the city is taking strides. I do want to commit counsel for that. As you have applied for the drinking water state revolving fund. For design funds for project one and four that was recently awarded. And so there's a, there's an agreement that's coming to council, I believe. Mike's been working with staff at Department of Commerce to get that process to where it could be in a form to present to council. And so that is in the works. Uh, the second project there, Stafford Avenue Water Main Replacement. That was applied for CDPG funds and was awarded earlier this year. And is currently planned for construction still this calendar year, which replaces a twelve-inch section of AC water main. That's really the backbone of all of zone one in the system. So that is, that is a huge improvement that the city is working towards completion. Uh, working down the list, number five is the zone two reservoir. We talked about combining that with the zone three reservoir. So by combining five and fourteen. Uh, really accomplishing two major projects and one that'll serve not only one pressure zone like this first project five would. But two pressures off by combining projects. Number five, it shows at the plant for a zone two reservoir. And this is what kind of spurred the discussion too. Anytime we're talking reservoirs. It's so elevation-specific, you've got to find a site where you're not going to have a bunch of dead storage in the bottom of that reservoir. That doesn't provide adequate pressure. Keep in mind, in these pressure zones, we have to have a minimum of thirty PSI and on the high end ninety to ninety-five PSI. And so that was part of what spurred the discussion, Ken, was there was about a third of that reservoir would be dead storage. So by moving that up to zone three and essentially building in a second reservoir next to the existing within the combines of Cincadia. There's no dead storage.
Yeah.
Number six is the water treatment plant filter expansion. Again, that's that fourth filter bed that I mentioned earlier. That that the developer would have a share in that cost. Uh, number eight and nine, water treatment plant facility improvements, telemetry software, that all would go together as one improvement. Uh, number eleven is recoding, uh, the existing reservoirs. Uh, that's important to extend the service life for those reservoirs rather than full replacement. Number twelve is a big one there with the downtown water main replacement. Those are AC sections. And then finally, within that ten-year window, number thirteen is the railroad street upside. And that's an existing four-inch main. That again, the hydrants are bagged at this point because they don't provide adequate fire flow. And so all thirteen of those are planned within the next ten-year window. Yes, so the reservoirs. All existing reservoirs, you know, the materials, whether it's concrete or steel coating is is big on that, you know, there's. There's minerals in water and just like anything else, if you don't keep the inside of that fresh, it degrades. And so by recoding those. Your replacement of that reservoir is is that much further out in the future.
And so that's the seal reservoirs, so we'd have to drain them.
Correct. And that's the beauty of timing a new reservoir too, is having that online to provide that additional storage when you're already wanted down.
Item seven and eleven, can you elaborate on those? The God was not, phase one and two.
Okay, so yeah, those are both South Playon improvements. I did skip over those.
Yeah, that they're responsible for.
South Playon is responsible for those. In fact, they presented it. Couple of weeks ago and we focused on those two projects. Good question. And then the balance of these are are beyond the ten-year outlook. Primarily focusing on AC water main replacements and looping those sections where fire flows. And doesn't meet current standards. So getting into the, you know, how, we've kind of these improvements, how do we fund those? I mean, it comes back to the rate discussion again. You'll notice on. Table nine-six. The Playon's got four different funds. You've got the the four oh one, the operating water fund, you've got. Four oh four, which is the regional fund and then you've got the reserve as well. You'll notice at the bottom of table nine dash six, projected water revenue increase. We've got ten percent slated and eight percent slated for consecutive years. And these are just rough numbers. What I would, what I recommend the council consider is actual rate analysis. The water system plan. It's it's high level. We identify the improvements. Here's what the cash flow needs to be to to pay for those improvements. And then there's just percentages for revenue increases. Taking a deeper look into that, just like we're doing right now for the wastewater fund. Uh, would recommend that be the next step, sort of just jumping to it. Ten percent rate increase next council meeting. It would never be a consideration, but I I would recommend a rate study before. Uh, you go too much.
This is Playon specific.
It's Playon specific.
And but uh. We've got three communities in Suncadia on the sewer side and we got two communities plus Suncadia. What? What about the other parties?
And that's where the four oh four is important, the next table. That actually has a rating increase. Say a revenue increase shown in twelve percent and eight percent because there's, there's more regional components. In this ten-year build-out than there are Playon only. And so that's the difference between the ten percent, eight percent versus the twelve percent, eight percent. In these two tables. So that does take into account the regional partners. And then four oh six, again, that's just the reserve funds. There are transfers. Uh, in and out of it to pay for the improvements. And this is consistent with the other where it's got a ten percent and an eight percent. So it would follow whatever the the operating fund is. In terms of rate increases and revenue increases. Now, one thing that we're proposing to do in the financial program to help the city. You know, not have the cash flow these is utilizing the resources that are available. So. State Drinking Water State Revolving Fund has been historically one of the best in terms of water system improvements. Typically, water gets competitive base, so you're competing against curbate water system across the state. If it's water quality, you're almost guaranteed to get funded. If it's fire flow related, it doesn't usually score and compete as well as water quality. They want to put their funds towards. Those communities where water quality is an issue. Uh, but the last. I think it's been the last three budget cycles with the state, there's been leftover money once the DWSR programs. Is administered each year. And so they basically have funded all programs. Uh, very competitive, generally interest rates are one, one and a half percent. Back on the design only, which is what the city recently secured. It's a zero percent interest rate. So they'll actually just finance it for you because it's a smaller amount. And then there's a five-year payback on that. So there are some programs out there to assist, but generally they're always long-based unless you qualify for CDPG. The Public Works Trust Fund unfortunately has has been robbed every year at the state budget to where it doesn't really exist anymore at this point. There's still hope in the future, you know, they've even renamed it, but again, it's the supplemental cycle. They took funds from it that are no longer available. So we always keep our eyes peeled for for grant opportunities, but they are few and far between. You know, if it is tied to job creation and improvement of such, you know, say there's, say there's an applicant that comes to town and it has two hundred and fifty new jobs. There's opportunities for that. There's curb funding. There's the distressed county, you know, Kidde Tass County point oh nine funds to go after. So we we've got other opportunities, but it takes something more. You can't just go to. The state and say, we've got AC water main that we need replaced. You've got to do something more to be eligible for these other programs. So. You know, anytime we go through these planning documents, a lot of times there's always going to be deficiencies. Playon's not alone. Every city is faced with this challenge right now and basically it's, how do we respond to this? With the growth that's that's on the horizon in Playon, there's going to be potential for, you know, more share for for more rate pairs. Things make it easier for the city in that regard. But being responsible and having high-quality waters. Needs to be a priority and to get there, we would recommend a rate increase. This is again, it was just a workshop to talk through the plan, not looking for any motions or or approvals or anything. This is just discussion of the findings of the plan. So happy to answer any additional questions. I know we had some during the discussion. Any additional questions?
Well, I appreciate it for one thing and then uh, you you have to, the council must know. There was a time when we did not have water meters in this town.
Remember well.
And and we have just replaced the here recently better water meters, so we're even better trapped. Yeah, I'm concerned about that.
We installed meters and the year, the consumption.
So um, the other thing that you were suggesting was uh. Uh, a rate study, um, how how do we go about that? And uh, you know, do we just uh. Uh, you don't have it done.
Yeah, I I think it's similar to what you've done with your wastewater system. So, yeah, it was. It's probably been four or five months ago now.
Yeah, so we're still looking at that now, the sewer thing.
The sewer's a little more complicated because you've got more than just. What would be consumption in water is loading and wastewater, but loading isn't just flowing wastewater. There's other components. Where these total suspended solids. And so it's a little more complicated with the water. You've got user categories. And you've got consumption. So it's just making an equitable split between those user categories, the the consumers. And then looking at your rate structure. The city's already in a rate structure where the more water you use, the more you pay. Some communities still aren't that way, where it's just a fixed rate, use as much water as you want. And that's what the Department of Health wants, gets cities away from doing. So you've already taken that step. It's just a matter of what do we do to increase the rates? For for that matter, so City of Yakima, for example, there's half the city's on city water. The other half is on Nob Hill Water District. And it's a utility district. In fact, the house that I'm in is grown off the water. In February, I got a notice and it was a letter from Nob Hill, nicely written by their board, which is four members and it said. Beginning next month, there'll be a seventeen-dollar infrastructure fee. That's a new line item on your bill. And when your bill is generally thirty to forty dollars a month and we had seventeen, that's almost a fifty percent increase. Uh, I got that and I just started smiling and my wife says, wha- what is that, you know? And I read it through and she says, oh my gosh, that's a big jump. And I said, no, it's not enough, honey. And I explained to her, the million feet of AC water main that Nob Hill is trying to replace the next twenty years. This isn't enough money to do that. And so we started talking through it a little bit more and I try not to talk too much engineering with my wife. But she started getting it and said, yeah, this is a big deal. So whether it's an infrastructure fee line item or it's an actual rate increase, I mean, there's different strategies to consider. But at the end of the day, it's just additional revenue. That's how you get there.
Our rates are already ahead of my pitch. But uh, that being said, I guess I'm interested.
My my question for council or others is is a REIT to something that could be spent on this type of infrastructure?
I was just going to ask how many of these projects in our capital facilities plan. But these have to be in the plan in order to be able to use that money on it. That's.
Wait for that question. So I'm glad somebody asked. I didn't want to bring it up unless I had to. But REIT two is something that a lot of agencies are taking advantage of.
Yeah.
This is your capital improvement program. And so with the thirty projects that are identified, absolutely, and a lot of agencies are doing.
Because then you're not shouldering existing rate pairs, you're you're charging them on.
Well, we'll probably have to do that too, quite frankly.
No, I know, but I'm saying it could, it would allow it.
Yeah, we we get money in different places.
I understand we're close there perhaps, so the next meeting we'll have on the agenda, REIT two.
No, that's fantastic. For all you for considering that.
This.
High replacement.
Yeah, with the high number of real estate transactions that are occurring, it's, there's a huge opportunity there. REIT two isn't in place, it's an opportunity lost. I'm a great question. Pay attention to where you get your REIT monies from.
Okay, um, other questions for Ben? Right. Well, it's always fun to listen to this stuff.
But I don't worry because I know engineering is the most fascinating topic sometimes. I just wait for a question.
Can you, can you send us electronic copy of that binder?
I would love to. Yes. The state still requires printed copies and that's why I've got one there.
Yeah, I probably got a hard copy, you know, this should be okay.
I'll send it via one, Ryan.
Perfect.
I still want to come visit. How about a non-city council Monday?
Any Tuesday through Friday would be.
Well, thank you very much, Ben.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
It's our, it's our, it's our benefit. Okay, any other questions? Yes. Okay. Now we're done with that, we'll move on to uh. Well, Ben, you've got another one here. City safety improvement award for material testing.
All right, this one will be a lot quicker. City safety project, this one went to bid. Gosh, it's been about a month and a half ago. So last council meeting, you guys approved the construction contract. This council meeting is for the materials testing contract. And so any projects that's funded with federal funds, that's transportation. The city has to procure a materials tester independent of the contractor. So we put out an RFB. Surprisingly, only one material testing firm provided a bid, but fortunately it was within the the budgeted amount. And so we recommend. Approval of the contract with their testing.
I move that we award the materials testing contract for testing and engineering in the amount of five thousand four hundred and five dollars.
Max. Maximum.
Second.
Move the seconded to award to bear testing and engineering. Material testing to the amount of five thousand four hundred and five dollars.
And again, can you remind us the specific project?
This for city safety improvements, which is kind of scattered. You've got the guard rail replacement.
So they make sure the cement is okay. Materials. Okay, yes. Questions on the motion? You're none all favor with I? Yes. Okay, then let's see. So now. I mean, Ben, you really are free to go. You got to drive Yakima, you know.
He promised me a drag race.
Okay, so the next one is inter local agreement between. The city of Playon and the Ronald Water District number two for services and Mike Englehart explain.
Yeah, this one's pretty basic. The Kidda Tass County Water District number two up in Ronald. They don't have any of the, basically they have no equipment. They have a pickup. So they reached out to me. Just to set up a service contract that if for some reason one of their pumps go out. We could come up and help assist in removing the pump, getting the secondary pump online so that they don't lose service. So this is just an agreement. Just like we have with Roslyn, just like we have with Acadia, the city of Kiddy Tass. That if something goes awry, our services are available if we're available to assist in.
And we have a a sheet of rates.
So they will be paying for actual through our rate. They'll be paying for actual costs. So it'll be no loss to.
I know it's probably common practice, but on the indemnification clause being two way, is that? Is that, is this language that they just suggested or is this?
This is written up from our attorney, submitted to them for review and they agreed. We're asking the council to approve the mayor to sign up.
Three seconds.
Yeah, okay, moved it seconded to authorize. That's that gets the second. Moved and seconded to authorize mayor to sign the Kidda Tass County Water District two. Service. Services. Questions on the motion? You're none all in favor with that? Hey, that'll be signed. Thanks, Beth. I I I. You got in there quicker than I could.
Good for you.
Yes. Okay. So next, under committee reports, we have an IT report from.
From me. So.
Matt, you.
A month ago, a month and a half ago, I don't know. Rob brought up this text by Gov service that. Staff would like to start using our various departments to be able to communicate with members of the public. They will sign up for alerts for various things around the city that that they're interested in. Roslyn and I would Kidda Tass both use it and I've had good, good luck with it. And it also integrates with our. What's it called? I work system. It's the problem reporting system on the website. So IT committee met for this meeting. And we are recommending that we authorize the mayor or his designated need to sign the contract to get this going.
Okay. So is that, so you authorize that? It's just like you can do it. So want to vote on you guys.
So he's recommended and I would motion to the effect of his recommendation.
Hey, since take a second. Moved to seconded to authorize, moved in second to authorize that. They. I'm having trouble thinking. It's okay. Don't worry. Move the second to authorize the administration to sign the contract.
Text my go.
Check my. Yes. Questions on the motion?
Oh, thank you. That's a great, that's a great question. Twenty five hundred dollars a year and they're waiving the fifteen hundred dollar fee. That gets us, we'll have a phone number, the software. The short codes you can text to, you know, two oh two oh two or whatever, unlimited users, limited departments. Unlimited support, twenty five thousand text messages a year. So don't give us anything we need.
Yes, no, it's a good question. I remember the amount from the last time.
The one, the other, the other thing that 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 justified the cost in case it's created any heartburn to anybody was. That you can also limit the broadcast of the texts to geographical locations. So say you wanna. You don't have to just send a, every time you have, maybe you have first street is water, you know, the water main in first street is down. You don't have to send out a text to everybody in the whole city. You could send just text messages to the affected areas. And that was the big thing that pushed me into its value. Because I know you can obviously get cell phones cheaper or, you know, texting lines. But the ability to be able to self sign up for certain levels of alerts and then to be able to have it. Geo tagged by the address that you give is just makes it worth it.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? None all in favor of I? Thank you, Beth. Proceed with that. So we're down. I don't know why it has to be thirteen, but we are down thirteen. What's what's the? Well, any other committee reports? Sound like it.
I know, I know it's been noticed publicly, but there will be the study session on March thirty first at four PM. Where we're working out through the draft of the council member handbook.
Yes, I will be joining via Zoom.
That'll be Thursday, March thirty first. That's this Thursday at four PM.
Yep, here we go. Right here.
Oh, I might ask also under committee, since it's under committee business. We need somebody to be appointed in Russ's absence, as he's no longer on the council, to the cemetery committee. Because we do have some business pressing and I'd like to.
We're gonna have a committees discussion when we did that in previous years, kind of talk about the committee.
Usually for this, something something situation like that, is there someone interested?
I'll reach out to the, I'll reach out to the members.
All right. So is that, was that a motion to adjourn? Yeah, okay.